Hey John, did you receive anybody a call saying that somebody wouldn't be here tonight? Or?
No, I have not received any such calls.
Thank you. So I am ready to begin. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM on January 18th, 2022. Can everybody please sit or stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. So our roll call Commissioner Huggins present, Commissioner Johnson present, Commissioner Freiburger present, Commissioner Patizzi present, Commissioner Maddox present, Commissioner for net present, Commissioner Penno. Everyone is present. So as we move on through the agenda, has everyone had the opportunity to evaluate the November 16th and December 21st meeting minutes? Any commentary?
I didn't see any corrections.
Okay. So regarding the November 16th meeting minutes, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I so moved to prove the.
Commissioner Freiburger has made a motion to approve the November 16th meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Commissioner Maddox's seconded motion carries on to the next December 21st.
I move to approve December 21st, 2021 meeting minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson to approve the December 21st, 2021 meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Freiburger. All in favor of sorry about that, all in favor, I or Nate.
I.
Motion passes. So on to the general public comments section. We will open the go ahead Commissioner Freiburger, I'm sorry.
I believe that was Commissioner Penno that seconded that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second set of minutes.
I'm having some technical problems here tonight, everybody, so be patient with me. The motion seconded, it passes. So we would like to open up the general public comments section at 6:33 PM. Have we received any emails or any comments ahead of tonight's meeting?
So I have not received any written comments.
Is there anyone in the audience online that would like to make a general public comment? And once going twice. Okay, I will close the open public comments at 6:34 PM. And one thing that I found really useful before we move on to the public hearing. It's just the format for me made it a lot easier to understand. So according to our public hearings procedures, John, I'm going to start with you for a staff report, additional materials and so on. The floor is yours, sir.
All right, then after staff comments, we'll be opening the public comment or we'll be giving the applicant the opportunity to speak and then open the public hearing. After that, and then after the public, then after the public hearing is closed, we the planning commission may begin to deliberate and potentially take action on the request. So. That said, procedural stuff out of the way, the planning commission has been reviewing for several months now, a proposal by a joint proposal from the RJ group and and BYK construction requesting changes to their urban village mixed use overlay regulations as they relate to parking. And there's two, two general parts of the parking that they wanted, that they requested to change. Looking through our participants right now, I recognize that it's all planning commission staff members of the city or people that work for RJ group or for BYK. So given the absence of any general public, I'm going to skip over the details of the project of the requested amendments themselves. As everybody's, everybody in attendance is very aware of what the proposal is. The planning commission has reviewed this. This item several times already. At the September 21st, the October 19th and December 21st, 2020, 2021 meetings. And so today is a public hearing on the proposal. And that's about all I have to offer except for the recommendations that I staff included in our memo. Three basic recommendations, those are for the planning commission to choose from, but isn't. It's just so if you're looking for verbiage as you're going to make your motion, you can choose from either recommend the council approve, recommend the city council deny, or recommend that the city council approve with amendments. So I just tried to lay that out clearly so the planning commission can look there to page five of the packet and have something to look at if they wanted to make a motion. We do, we do encourage the planning commission to make a motion today on this as this is the fourth time that we've touched it and like to move this project along. And that's all I have to present.
Thank you. So with that, I know my proponents are here and they're present. So I'm just looking across my screen, so I'm just going to go from left to right. So Mr. Janiky, you're up. Robbie there?
Rob is not there right now. We have people listening in on our team, so Megan Doyle is taking notes. She's on Rob's computer. He might be able to pop up hopefully, but no, but from our team, we have Devon and Scarlett at RJ group. Oh, and there he is.
Right, there he is.
Right in.
So whoever wants to speak from the applicant's side from the RJ group, now would be the great time.
This is Rob Janiky and we have Molly Janiky, who will be talking a little bit about the marketing side of this. So you guys understand where we're at and Devon Keynes was the original author of the work and then she unfortunately was on maternity leave during the last two meetings. So we had a kind of a gap in that. Is she available today, Molly?
Yeah, I'm here, Rob, and I am, John, also happy to talk about the nature of my original proposal. So as Rob mentioned, I've been on maternity leave for the last two meetings. So I feel like I'm coming into this a little bit without the history of what you have already discussed and reviewed. But I guess just to summarize the nature of the proposal, I mean, you've all, you've already essentially looking for the option to utilize a shared parking agreement on a project by project basis for UVMU projects. And then also had incorporated into the request that the construction of on of street parking be part of the overall parking count for an individual project in the UVMU. And that was part of, like we said, our joint request of BYK. And I see that Paul Woodmanzy is here from, from BYK, maybe you can touch on that. Of course, everyone knows that the RJ group were under construction of a mixed use building off of Hodgson Street currently that was developed under the UVMU code. This project is just one example of the type of project that would benefit from a code change as adopted under the UVMU that we've requested. And I think it's important to remember that what we're discussing is a code change for any UVMU project, not just something specific to this one project that we have or one project that BYK has, but that we should be thinking about the lens of how can UVMU projects benefit in the future? And we jointly feel that these changes would make the UVMU code more palatable for future development.
Thank you. Does any, do we have any other members of the RJ group that would like to add into that at this point? Before I move on to Mr. Woodmanzy? Okay, Mr. Woodmanzy, you're up.
Hey, everybody, my name's Paul Woodmanzy, President of BYK Construction. I just wanted to bring up, I hope you all saw my letter is part of the amendment request in terms of where I talk about specifically how our project trail road was. We lost green space area due to the inability to count on street parking that we create during our project to be counted towards a commercial use. Specifically, it's specific parking that we are creating and building on the, on the road that will be in the right of way and be able to be used by commercial uses as well as ordinary right of way parking. And so we feel like it's a, it would be a big help to these projects within the UVMU to be able to at least count on street parking towards commercial parking requirements at a minimum. At this point, we're not trying to ask for a reduction in resident residential parking requirements, specifically commercial ones. And we're not even really asking for a commercial reduction. We're really just saying, allow us to, to, to count all the parking that we actually create within our project to be counted towards our con, our projects parking. And outside of that, I mean, I'm more than happy to have any questions that you guys might have. I've been reading through the the actual document that John sent out, the amendment request kind of memo. I'm not really seeing, John, I have a question, I guess, I'm not really seeing where you have a recommendation to the plan commission. Do you know what page that's on?
Staff left it to the planning commission to make the recommendation. We didn't, staff didn't provide a staff.
Staff didn't give it, they just did some research and provided the documentation of the research. Is that correct?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, at this particular point, I'd like to open up the public portion of this at 6:44 PM. And just to reiterate for the, I'm sorry. For the record, that person shall state his or her name and address as well as any group or organization he or she represents. So with that, do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposal? I don't see anyone. Bill, do we have anyone online that would like to add into this?
I'm not aware of anyone.
Okay. How about we give it another 30 seconds before I close it? By the way, to both applicants, it was, it was very detailed, we have discussed this. So we'll get on to that in just a few minutes. Okay, I'm closing the public portion at 6:45. And planning commissioners, it's now your turn to debate and talk about the proposals submitted by staff. Anyone clear care to open up? And since I'm limited, like I could see is could raise your hand before I address you. This way I'll know what the order is. Commissioner for now, you don't have some comment on, on any of this?
Not yet.
Not yet.
But thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, anyone?
So I don't know if we want to dive into details about the possibility of opening up the shared parking concept. I mean, that of the two proposals, that's the one I'm, I'm most in favor of or open to discussing. You know, with the street parking, I just don't really see a whole lot of precedent. You know, regionally speaking for this, I know that there's other municipalities that have done it. The closest one is in very limited fashion. That is a public street and that is should be open for public parking. It is a public amenity in that way. Whether or not you're creating it or not, you know, that's one thing, but it is a public amenity in that way. So you know, as far as the on-street parking, that's something that I'm not so favorable towards, but you know, as far as the, the shared parking, you know, that, that's another story. And I'm not sure whether or not there's further appetite amongst my colleagues on the commission here or, or not to exploring that further.
You know, I did take a look at the details, specifically the changes to title 17. I thought the definitions update was well done. We do have a typo in 1721080, I believe it's shared, not sharp. And then on the final one, regarding specifically to this, it looks like we have some pretty tight guidelines to control different situations that might arise. So I personally didn't have any problem, myself with any of the three modifications made that seem to accommodate everybody. I mean, in the essence of the BYK proposal, it's very limited as to where it's at. And it would be people parking for the commercial space anyway. That's the only thing that's really going on there. So I personally didn't have an objection to, to that and myself. I thought, I thought it was a really good balance between listening to what people had to say as well as what the resolutions can potentially be. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I think.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Freiburger, I'll get to you next.
Okay.
Go, go ahead.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. As the applicant pointed out, we're looking at changes to the UVMU guidelines in general, not necessarily specifically for a specific project. So it, it would be on the applicant for whatever project it was to demonstrate, you know, that they could provide the necessary criteria for the shared parking. It would be on a case by case basis. So I agree with Commissioner Johnson that I think this is a pretty good start framework for that shared parking, but I am not leaning favorably toward the right of way on street being counted toward.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, I think you had your hand up next. You're muted, Silas.
Okay, I, I am inclined to be in favor, I think, of both of these. I, because the on-street parking credit, or I don't know how you would frame it. It is only for commercial. I think that the, those spaces, I mean, that's what they'll end up being used for. And if there's an opportunity to provide more green space and eliminate land use that goes towards parking places, I'm in favor of that. And if these developers are, are building these parking spaces as part of their project, I am in favor. I, I, I don't know if it needs to be. There needs to be any caveats on it or not, but I, I think in this case it makes sense. Also with the shared parking, because it is on a case by case basis. I, I believe that there's an argument to leave that open or, you know, to provide that possibility. So I guess in general, I would be in favor of the proposal as it's written.
Anyone else? Okay, so at this particular point, I'm going to go straight over to page, I believe it's three, where the recommendations come in that we have three separate options. Let me just go through them as I scroll on down. Give me a moment here, folks.
Page five.
Oh, go ahead.
It's page five.
Okay, so staff recommends that the planning commission review the proposed amendments to chapter 17.21 urban mixed, mixed village, mixed use overlay, hold a public meeting, discuss the amendments, make a motion to one. Recommend that the city council approve the RJ group and BYK constructions proposed amendments by to chapter 1721 urban village mixed use overlay. Or recommend that the city council deny the RJ group and BYK constructions proposed amendments by to chapter 1721 urban village mixed use overlay. Or this is option three, recommend that the city council approve the RJ group and BYK constructions proposed amendments to chapter 1721 urban village mixed use overlay with the attached amendments. So we've had some commentary here on the attached amendments. And my own opinion is there seems to be quite a bit of protection simply because they do require approval by the city planner. On top of that, it's very specific issues that I think a good job was done here on, on just those changes outside of sharp. Anybody have any additional commentary before I ask to make a motion?
Staff does.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, I'm sorry, of those three options, the third one would require the planning commission to identify attached amendments, the sorry that maybe that wasn't real clear. So you can either use option one, which is just to prove as BYK and RJ group has proposed it. Option two would be to deny, which means wouldn't adopt any of the changes. Or, or option three would be adopt some sort of approve something about UVMU parking, but it would need to be clearly laid out in the motion and discussed through this process before you could choose option C.
Okay. You know, the only, the only, before I get to you, the only places I saw changes was on 170403.
The only changes you see are the changes that are proposed by the applicant.
I'm looking at what was put in, in red.
Those are the ones proposed by the applicant.
Okay.
And staff and the planning commission have not put together any additional changes that might be part of option C.
Okay, thank you.
Unless the planning commission wanted to go through a process of doing so. That's entirely within your, your purview, but just to be clear, we haven't done anything like that yet. So option C would be a little troublesome at the moment.
Okay. Commissioner Huggins?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to clarify that, that there, there have been changes since the last meeting because I was, I was, I just got these today and I am working under the assumption that, that nothing has changed since the last meeting.
So nothing has changed. The exhibit A or exhibit attachment one is the request as proposed by RJ group and BYK construction. That is all of their edits, that is their letter, that is what they are proposing. And the planning commission and staff has not done any, any editing to attachment A or attachment one.
Is attachment A new since the last meeting?
No, it's been the same since they proposed it back in June.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Anyone else? So we have three options here, ladies and gentlemen. Would anybody like to make a motion on any of the three?
So just go ahead, Silas.
You need to unmute Silas.
Okay, I was just going to say that it seems like we're in general agreement about, from what I've heard anyway, I wasn't at the last meeting and so I didn't know what happened there exactly. But from what I've heard, it seems that we are generally in favor of allowing some sort of shared parking agreement. And then it seems like there's some dissension maybe about the use of of right of way parking towards commercial parking allowances. And so I, I don't know how we reconcile that exactly. There was a comment in the in, in the staff report about gifting of public resources or gifting of public funds or something about allowing which is a legal issue that I know that we've encountered before about allowing use of public space towards private enterprise or whatever. And I don't know if that's a legitimate issue or not. I, I, I still tend to find myself on the side of, of allowing that parking allowance for commercial spots that are developed by, or you know, paid for and built by the developer, even if they are in the right of way. But I, I guess I would be inclined to make a motion towards the first and adopt these proposed amendments, but I feel like we need to deal with the commercial right of way parking issue. So I don't know where to go from there.
So John, is it my understanding that on that option three, we would just need the specificity to go through that list? Is that correct?
So with option three, you could do. So with option three, you could do things like modify really anywhere in the in those, in the UVMU overlay development regulations to address anything. You could remove recommended language, remove for example, something that the applicant has written in there in red, or you could modify it, or the tables, you know, there's lots of options in what you can do and, you know, rewrite that, you know, rewrite it to for the, to make more sense for what the planning commission is trying to achieve. So you got a lot of options.
So with that, would we like to now discuss the I believe it's seventeen twenty-one oh eight oh C. And that talks specifically about where people's concerns are regarding utilizing city frontage to be used for the calculation of the amount of parking for the commercial side. Anybody want to take a shot? Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry.
So two things right off the bat. So just for procedural purposes, there technically is only two options on the table at the moment, approving or denying until we actually make some sort of change is my understanding. So as an example, purely striking the seventeen twenty-one oh eight oh C, if we didn't want to have the on-street parking would be an example of the amendment. Okay. So that aside, getting to the substantive portion of it, you know, I I just have a hard time justifying including the on-street parking into the total numbers. I realize that it adds green space or what have you, but you know, we, this is something that we did, you know, talk about trying to maximize green space within this develop, within these these guidelines and you know, for me, it's, I don't see where there's an added benefit to the public. I realize that there's an added benefit to the developer. This is a public street. Whether or not it is developed by the developer or not into something different than what it already is. It is a public street and a public amenity. And I don't think that it's going to be strictly used by, for commercial purposes, given that there's you know, other amenities, recreational amenities that are close by and the potentiality of the fact that there's school district property right across the road, you know, that wouldn't necessarily, you know, who knows what that's gonna look like, but you know, there is that potential that it's not gonna be strictly and wholly commercial usage. So you know, that's, in addition to what the comments were during, you know, the general public comment, you know, this may not be the only UVMU project that we ever see. And moving forward, you know, I would you know, I would like to leave that open for the public. I could see where projects down the road, the public usage of the on-street parking next to these UVMU projects would be beneficial. So I would hate to provide an option to eliminate that. So for that reason in particular, I'm I'm against the on-street parking changes to the UVMU.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Commissioner Maddox. You're still on mute.
To Eric's first point, or Commissioner Johnson's first point, I think that we should tackle these two issues separately. Seems like there's a clear appetite to approve the shared parking agreement portion.
I wasn't, I wasn't looping shared parking into this at all, this.
No, no, I, I, just to your procedural point that we only have two options here of approve or deny. I think it might make our job easier if we separate out the right-of-way parking issue and vote on the shared parking agreement. And then we can tackle the the right-of-way issue separately. Maybe that's making it too complicated, but.
You can't, you can't, you can't break it up into two different motions. There's one proposal on the table. If you want to modify the proposal then vote on that, but you can't break it up into two and have two separate motions.
Yeah, I mean, to clarify my comments, that John's probably putting it into better verbiage than I am. I, I was saying that there's technically one proposal at the moment, and so there's only two options, voting up or down. And then any amendments such as eliminating the public right-of-way parking would then you know, give us that, that other option for a vote, but.
But then if we were to do that, we'd have to tackle the public right-of-way part of it as a completely separate proposal, which would start this ball all over again.
No, it'd be an amendment to the proposal. So it'd be, it'd be two different votes, but it'd be an amendment to the proposal.
Okay.
So I believe I do have this latitude on Mr. Woodmancy.
The public hearing is closed. We're in planning commission deliberation now.
You know, we had extensive discussion at the last meeting regarding looking at this more like a version one dot O of the UVMU. And then having a process and defining a process where there, there could be certain aspects that are tracked after the projects are deployed to modify that parking requirement at some point in the future based upon our experience after build-out. So I'd like to know if anybody has any additional comments on that. We went through that for a good twenty minutes. Commissioner Maddox, I'm sorry, Commissioner Huggins.
So after months of looking at this and going over it, I personally don't want to see any changes to the existing parking requirements in the mixed-use urban village thing at this time, but I did propose, I hate, I hate shutting things down. That's not my, my nature always, like to be able to leave ways to fix things. And I did propose an idea that Joe just touched on, which was that that there'd be a way for the developer to recapture some of the parking to use as public amenities only after the fact. So the fact that they're claiming that they're losing public amenities by having to put in so much parking. I did propose an idea that we could work on to to recapture some of that parking at a later date and turn, turn back into amenities if they if they so desire. And we'd have to figure out a mechanism, but anyway, that's, that's my, my view on, on, on the issue.
Anyone else? Commissioner Pennau.
Yes, I agree with Pat. We did discuss this lengthy last time. And I agree, I don't think that we need to be changing anything in our zoning, UVMU zoning for the parking right now. We put a lot of work into that already, getting it to where it is now. And I just, I think that the way we've got it set up is, is a good good way right now. I do agree with Pat if on his idea of on down the line, if they wanted to change or bring in some more parking that way. But I just, I don't think that we should be changing the work we just finished.
Thank you. So at this particular point, if someone would make a motion, we'll see if we get a second on it and bring it up for a vote.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend the proposal to chapter seventeen twenty-one urban village mixed-use overlay in striking from section seventeen dot twenty-one dot oh eight oh parking general subsection C from the proposal.
John, does that qualify at the level of detail that you need?
I'm looking through to see if there's any other language in there about about on-street, allowing on-street parking. But I think, I think that would be procedurally okay.
Okay.
Roll through on that. I think that's the only section that addressed counting on-street parking. Yeah, so that's the only section that addressed on-street parking being allowed to count towards the parking requirement.
So do I have a second on Commissioner Johnson's motion?
I'll second that.
I get a second from Commissioner Freiburger. Everyone in favor, say aye or nay. Aye.
Aye.
I believe we have a unanimous vote. So the motion carries.
I.
Go ahead.
I voted nay.
Oh. Oh, I apologize. Like I said, it's tough for me to, to see what's going on right now. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six to one. Commissioner Frenette, sorry. Commissioner, I can't hear you. You're on mute.
Who, me?
Yeah, yeah, you.
That was a yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so we're still at six to one. Anyway, motion carries. Onto our next point of business.
Hold on, though. That was just a motion for the amendment, not for
The way I understood it was a motion to pass with striking section C under seventeen twenty oh eight oh.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, am I good to move on? Okay, unfinished business. Review and approve the updated planning commission rules and procedures, which by the way, I thought are very, very helpful for all of us, because it really does identify the procedural aspect of things, particularly on the public hearing side. So has everyone had the ability to review that? And any comments?
So Steph just made changes to it to address the things that the planning commission wanted to see changed in it since last time. So that's, you'll see some stricken out and underlined and red. There's nothing been adopted yet. That's just to show you what changed since the last month when you reviewed this. And it's all, and all the changes are just on page one.
Any comments? So at this particular point, I'm just gonna go right to the last page, amending rules of procedure. The planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting may amend these rules. Go ahead. These rules of procedure and the consensus, all members must be present to amend the rules of procedure. A copy of said rules and procedure will be filed with the city clerk's office. We do have everyone in attendance. And at this particular point, I'll make a motion to amend the rules of procedure, and I'm looking for a second and a vote.
Just a point of order. There's no amending to the rules of procedure that you're, you're fully adopting these, because they have not yet been adopted.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. So at this point, I think we still need a vote, right?
Well, a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Motion adopt.
So I make a motion to adopt the rules and procedures, and we have a second. Go ahead.
Just a point of order. I don't think the chairperson can make a motion. But you can ask for a motion.
Okay, I'm asking for a motion. I guess I kind of have things.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox, do I get a second? Second, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second. So it's motions carry and the rules and procedures will be updated.
You got a first and a second, but there hasn't been a vote yet, Joe.
Yeah, you need a vote, Joe.
Okay, can I please have a vote?
Yes.
Everybody raise your hand for aye. I think, I think we're unanimous here. I apologize. Listen, I, my screen's not up. It's, it's, it's a weird kind of night. So I believe the motion is unanimous in the count. John, is there anything else that you need from at this point?
Not on the rules of procedure.
Okay.
Move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, well, we're electing a new chairperson and vice chair, and I believe the way I read this, someone needs to I'm gonna make sure I get this right, to nominate a member, and you cannot nominate yourself unless nobody else makes a nomination. So would somebody like to nominate an individual for chair and co-chair and vice chair? Someone needs to say something. Thank.
I nominate Joe Fatizzi as a chair and Eric as vice chair again. So hopefully you will get a chance to actually have a meeting in the building this year.
Do we have any other entries? Okay, at this particular.
I would second Commissioner Huggins nomination.
Thank you. Can we now go with, it's been motioned by Commissioner Huggins, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Can we take this to a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have Commissioner Frenette, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Huggins, Commissioner Maddox is yes. And I believe we'll have two other no's. Is that correct? Okay, so we have a no from Commissioner Pennau and Commissioner Freiburger. The motion carries. So that's pretty much what we have here tonight. And is there anything else that somebody would like to talk about for a discussion or information items that are not on the agenda? With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, we have a move to adjourn by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mission. The meeting is adjourned at seven eighteen PM. Thank you, everybody.